Okay, let's call this meeting into order and stand for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The floor falls to President.
Senator, I would like to see to be on Honorable Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Senator, Senator Dan Fowler.
Here.
Doug Sasso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Quinn Anderson.
He has an excused absence, on vacation.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Present.
Okay, well, behind the curtain, we do not have microphones. Before we get started, Wayne and Lindsay would like to address counsel for this moment.
Well, thank you, I don't know if this mic's working or not. We truly wanted to stop in simply to say thank you to you guys for what we felt like was a pretty successful box talk yesterday. Our ladies, our teams, like you were. The layout change, the things we did that were different, went pretty well, but...
The thing that it led to was a lot of things that we didn't anticipate, and that's where a lot of these guys back here came in. We had a lot of guys on the phone helping us out, and I'm sure it's not always that way, but they show up, they got a smile on their face, they're ready to help, you know, and they... Because we were like, hey, we forgot a whole bunch of dumpsters. They had to come back with the trash truck and stuff, and so... It went well, but it didn't go perfect, and they helped us out a ton, so I just wanted to recognize them while we're there.
All of your department heads have been absolutely amazing. When we talk to them, when we meet all of them, and then we love that they show up and support the event, too, so that has been huge, so we just wanted to say thank you guys so much. We had so many comments about the moving of the layout, the beer garden, and we were pretty excited about that.
So, thank you.
I've heard very positive comments, and I would, as we talked yesterday, we do have phenomenal staff. They really are dedicated to their jobs, from the top to the bottom, and, you know, they're... They show up with a smile on their face, and I don't know if they have it when they leave, but they always are pleasantly present.
We've been trying to call them all week, so they won't take our calls now.
They won't take our calls today. It's called caller ID.
Yeah, exactly, but thank you guys, and thanks to your staff and everybody. It was, I think it went pretty well, so...
Well, thank you. It was a very well-attended weekend from, I mean, from Thursday night live and all the way through Saturday evening. It was very well-attended, and we appreciate you...
Makes downtown lively.
It sure does. It sure does.
Make it an 11th next year, just so you have it on your calendar.
So, has anybody, I'm sure nobody's asked you who the headliners are for next year. I'm just kidding.
Oh, they have.
I don't know!
It might be us.
I've already put in my request, but whether they get it or not.
But thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you, guys. Jeff, make sure and pass on the...
Definitely.
Kudos to everybody, and they did a phenomenal job, from police department, electric, sanitation, streets, park.
Made us look good.
All the way down. Got a good crew.
Thank you. I'll let them know.
Okay. So, first item on the agenda is a city council acting as liquor licensing authority in a public hearing. This is a public hearing before the City Council of the City of Fort Morgan, acting as a liquor licensing authority for the city, to determine whether the application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license, malvenious and spiritous liquors by Restorante San McGill Incorporated, doing business as Restorante San McGill, at 322 Ensign Street, should be granted or denied. This hearing will be conducted pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado and the ordinances and procedures of the City of Fort Morgan. The purpose of this hearing is to receive information, data, and testimony by any interested party in order to enable the city to make findings and reach conclusions required to be made by state law as to whether or not the application should be approved or denied. One of the principal questions the council will be concerned with throughout this hearing relates to the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood for the outlet applied for and the desires and the inhabitants of that neighborhood with respects to the license. Those persons who will be heard during this hearing are parties of interest, who are defined by state law as being the applicant, residents of the neighborhood, and owners and managers of businesses located within the neighborhood. Council has previously set boundaries of the neighborhood for all city liquor licenses as the entire city. Does anyone present object to the boundaries of the neighborhood? Are there any disclosures from the council members? If not, I'll proceed to the public hearing. The order of this hearing will be as follows. At the conclusion of my opening statements, the clerk will give a summary of the preliminary investigation completed with regard to the applicant. The applicants will present their case, meaning they will present testimony, exhibits, petitions, and other materials relevant to the application. Interested parties may then testify for or against the proposed application, after which the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal. At the conclusion of all testimony, the council will make its decision to approve or deny the application. All testimony will be given under oath given by the city clerk. Any exhibits presented during the hearing will be submitted to the city clerk and become part of the record. The clerk's official files are hereby admitted into the record of this hearing. First is the legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of the public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on June 29th and was also posted on the property for at least 10 days before this hearing.
Next is the presentation of the application. Mr. Brennan.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. This is an application that first came to my office in May after working with the applicant to get all of the paperwork in order. It was sent for review to the city clerk or the city attorney's office and the police department and deemed to be complete. Then we brought it to the council, and you formally accepted the application on June 4th and set this public hearing for tonight. We published a legal notice in the newspaper. We posted a large sign outside the door of the restaurant on Ensign Street, and there are photographs of that posting in your packet materials. The primary purpose of this hearing is to establish needs and desires, is what they call it, the support for the license among the members of the community. And one thing that should be noted is this previously was a restaurant that had a hotel and restaurant liquor license, so that's been established for a number of years, but the best way to establish support is through petitions rather than soliciting people to come to the council meeting and express their support. So, Mr. Gabriel, the applicant submitted, I believe, a total of 60 signatures on petitions. 24 of them had to be ruled invalid because they didn't reside in the city limits, but there is no minimum number of signatures required. We've had fewer, we've had more, so, and those were all in favor. We have not received any comments written or verbal from anyone in either for or against the license. And again, the police department published notice on the property, a fingerprint background check has been done, and a preliminary inspection of the premises has been completed. So, staff is recommending that the liquor licensing authority weigh the evidence presented at this hearing and make an objective decision on this application for a new hotel and restaurant license.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant, if any. Does the applicant wish to address counsel?
Do you want to say anything, Gabriel?
Please, I appreciate it. I just wanted you guys to learn for you.
Can you come up to the... You need to swear them in.
Yeah. I'm going to swear both of you in since you're kind of interpreting, so can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Okay.
Dile buenos tardes a todos. He say, "Good afternoon" to everybody. He want to thank you, everybody, for getting his application. And for... And you guys spending, you guys time with him about this issue. And he thank you, everybody, for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does counsel have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue? No public comments. So, I would ask the city clerk if you've received any oral or written comments prior to this public hearing.
No, Your Honor.
Now, we'll proceed to counsel discussion. We have any questions from the counsel or any discussion?
No.
No? Since there is no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move.
Second. I have a motion to close by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Counsel action. Ms. Williams.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see where we are. Am I making a recommend... Sorry, I wasn't... Do you guys need the motion for, you should recommend a motion?
No, just what action you would recommend.
Oh, yes. Sorry about that. Oh, I have it, okay. So, the city's attorney has reviewed the application and found it to be in order. We'll brief the local licensing authority on the quasi judicial procedures to be followed, and we're fine with approval of this application that's in front of you.
Okay, thank you. I would entertain a resolution for approval or denial.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving an application for a new hotel and restaurant liquor license for Restorante San McGill Incorporated, doing business as Restorante San McGill, at 322 Ensign Street.
Second. I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on a unanimous vote of six to zero with counsel member Anderson absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a variance from distance requirements at 307 East Kiowa Avenue. Counsel will be acting in its capacity as zoning board of appeals for this matter. This is a public hearing. Please keep comment, public comment to the issues before counsel. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit of the duration of testimony if I determine it necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. First is a legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was it properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on June 28th.
And presentation of the application. Mr. Glamire.
All right, thank you. Good evening. What you have in your packet tonight is an application for a variance to lesser side yard distance or setbacks between buildings. You all will recall that our code requires 10 feet between buildings typically, and we have a situation where we have two buildings that were built in the early 1900s, and when I mean early, one of them was built in 1901, so that can't get much earlier than that. And of course, we didn't have these types of codes back then, so the buildings are built less than 10 feet. The applicant desires to change the use of one of these buildings from a business to a residential occupancy, and when you change use, we look at all of the rules at that point to make sure that they comply with the code. This is one of those that doesn't. We think this is, if there's any reason for variance, this is probably a very good case for that. With the age of these buildings, it'd be impossible to meet the requirements in the code without demolishing or severely changing one of the buildings to meet the 10-foot setback. Staff's reviewed the application. The applicant's done a great job of preparing a narrative that's in your packet with a sketch that shows what we're talking about. We've gone through the analysis of the criteria for a variance. We've placed those in the memo in your packet. There are seven criteria. We asked that you would consider those criteria when you make your decision. Our analysis of those criterias that we feel that those have been met. You'll see the articulation in the memo from the applicant about that. We've, we did receive one inquiry about this issue, but it was more of just what's it about and understand what they're asking, neither for nor against the application. So, with all of that, you know, staff would recommend approval of this case. This is case 19-012 VA for 307 East Kiowa Avenue, which would allow a variance for a lesser side yard setback between buildings than is required by the code in this district. We would further recommend that the following condition be applied if this is approved, that the variance would run with the land and the lot in perpetuity. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the application. The applicant is here tonight, if you have questions of them as well.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, that's a tough one to meet. I mean, I would hate to see one of these buildings demolished to meet this requirement, so...
Right. I felt like it was a really well-written application, and it, you know, the narrative was really strong, so I feel like all my big questions were already answered. And you're only a few inches short, you know, if you don't count the E.
Yeah, and we do in this case, and that also adds to the non-conformity. Yeah, yeah.
So, this is going to become a single-family residence?
I believe that's the intent, yeah.
And so, it's just the driveway that's in between?
Yeah, that's correct.
Only the driveway?
Yep.
I think it's kind of hard to hold a building to current code when it was built way before the code.
Yeah.
And then to add a little emphasis to it where we're really struggling and trying to do everything we can to get more housing available in Fort Morgan, I think it'd be a shame to let it be stalled on a technicality like this.
And I loved seeing the paperwork from the city from '89. That was really cool to see.
Yeah, yeah, we were able to find the, I mean, it essentially rezoned by variance, which is a little interesting in my world, but yeah.
And that '89 is old?
Yes. No, it's just...
Careful over there.
All a matter of perspective.
I was alive. I was alive.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant if she wishes to address counsel.
She's got a panic look on her face. I'm thinking that meant no.
Okay.
Can we still come to your house for coffee after it's a house? No. It's okay to say no.
Okay, next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this issue? If there's no public comments, I would ask the city clerk if you've received any oral or written comments prior to this hearing.
Not through my office, Your Honor.
Okay. Counsel discussion. Are there any questions from counsel or discussion?
Not for me.
I guess I would concur with Kevin. It's pretty hard to go back and hold a standard to something that was constructed in a time period before our standards, so...
118 years ago.
Almost impossible to cut 10 foot off the side of the building, so...
If there's no discussion by counsel, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move.
Second. I have a motion to close by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Counsel action. Ms. Williams.
Yes, I recommend that you move to approve this variance. I would add that the language is on the bottom of page two of Steve's memo. You add to it that you are, the board is satisfied that the criteria required in the code, section 20-3-150, have been analyzed and met. Those are the seven criteria, which we spoke about. It's crucial that those are looked at when you grant a variance, so I just would like if any motion could add that to it.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution to approve or deny the variance.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve case 19-012 VA for 307 East Kiowa Avenue for a variance to allow for a lesser side yard distance between dwellings than required by code for the zoning district. Staff also recommends the following, excuse me, with the following conditions that the variance run with the land and lot in perpetuity, and let it be noted that counsel found it satisfactory for section 20-3-150 for...
The criteria.
The criteria.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sasso. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next is presentation on bids for bunker gear for the Fort Morgan Fire Department. Chief Brasco.
Good evening, City Council. Last year, you guys approved a capital improvement of $60,000 for us to purchase bunker gear and a extractor and dryer for the fire department. So, on June 4th, we went out for a bid and received four different bids back, and that should have been in your packet. We looked at them and compared everything, and we're recommending to go with CoPro out of Eastlake, Colorado. We've dealt with them before. They were not the lowest bid. They were actually like $7,000 more than the lowest bid, but we've dealt with them before, and in their bid, they actually, this is actually the highest price. They gave us the bunker gear as a standard price, but then they, we also asked for boots and helmets and gloves and nomex, and they gave us variance of different qualities, I guess you would say. And when Tanya wrote this up, she went with the highest-priced one, so if we went with the lowest price, it was only like $2,000 difference, but we've dealt with them before, and they're local, and they've been served as well, so that's our recommendation to go with them.
Okay.
I have a quick question, and maybe I'm just not understanding this, so the lowest bid was $95,000, right?
$89,000.
Eighty, oh, I'm sorry, but the CoPro is $95,000, but yet we're only approving not to exceed $60,000?
Correct. I should have clarified that. $60,000 from the city, and we had $60,000 from our rural department, so we're splitting the total cost.
I'm like, mm, the math is off.
Just checking.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the purchase and accepting the bid from CoPro in an amount not to exceed $60,000 for 33 full sets of gear.
Second. A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Enjoy the new gear.
Next is a presentation on bids for a pickup for the Parks Department. Mr. Duke.
Good evening, counsel and mayor. This is for the purchase of a four-wheel-drive, half-ton regular cab pickup to be utilized by the Parks Department. This was approved in the 2019 capital improvement budget in the amount of $28,000. This new vehicle will replace a 1998 GMC pickup with over 106,000 miles on it. Each year, the State of Colorado Fleet Management does an invitation to bid for all different types of vehicles. Park staff looked at all available pickups listed on the State of Colorado 2019 award price agreement and decided to go with the 2019 Dodge Ram Classic half-ton regular cab four-wheel-drive pickup. Staff therefore is requesting counsel approval to accept the State of Colorado 2019 award price agreement with John Elway Chrysler Dodge in the amount of $20,138 for a four-wheel-drive, half-ton Dodge Ram Classic regular cab four-wheel-drive pickup, with these preferred options included, tow package, sprayed-in bed liner, and black tubular side steps, and that's all included in the $20,138. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Duke?
No.
So, is this different than where, in the past, where we've gone out to bid and had like local, like a local Dodge Jeep Ram? Is this a new process that we're going through where we're using the State of Colorado's?
Actually, the State of Colorado has done this bid process for a long time. We basically just decided to let them do the bid process and then went with what, because the state went out to bid for all these different vehicles. So, really, there's no way another, a local dealer could match this price.
Right, probably.
So, we just take their bid, basically, and go with that lowest price for that vehicle.
And the procurement policy allows either-or. They can go out and do their own bid or go to the state bid, and we've had the police department use the state bid for several years as the way that they find police cars, so... But that can be done either way.
We have, in our previous pickups, we've bought the last few, we've looked at the state bid process, basically decided what truck we wanted going through that, went out and opened up a bid to local dealers and other dealers in the state, and it always comes back as a company that had, won the state bid price, still gets a bid on this.
And that makes sense, if we can avoid going through that process because they've already been vetted, it makes sense.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. No other questions. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the purchase of a four-wheel-drive, half-ton Dodge Ram Classic regular cab... half- ton Dodge Ram Classic Regular Cab Four-Wheel Drive Pickup from John Elway Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram off of the State of Colorado 2019 Award Price Agreement.
Second. A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Next is presentation on bids for geotechnical engineering services. Mr. Glamire.
All right. We're doing a little project out at CenterPoint Plaza subdivision. Maybe you've seen some of that.
No, tell me about that.
We're deep into Phase Two already, which is hard to believe. We're still working on Phase One out at CenterPoint, but they've started work in Phase Two. They've stripped a lot of topsoil off of Beaver Extended. They're going to get started stripping topsoil off of Saunders Extended south of railroad. So we need to get a geotech engineering firm out there for some quality assurance, quality control. So we did bid that out to see, make sure that we had some good pricing there. Earth Engineering's currently doing that work for us on Phase One. We did get three bids on this. Earth was certainly the low bidder. Again, fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars versus twenty thousand four ninety-one and sixty-seven thousand forty-three. So I see Dave looking like, what the heck? Well, GeoCal, yeah, GeoCal's out of the Denver area. They're probably pretty busy, but they wanted to throw a number at it in case we were desperate and only got one bid, right?
Crazy enough to take it?
Yeah, yeah. You see that from time to time. But we certainly appreciate all of these folks bidding the project. Earth's done good work for us on Phase One. Don't anticipate any issues on Phase Two, but wanted to bring this before you tonight. So with that, we're just requesting approval to continue or enter into a contract with Earth Engineering for Phase Two CenterPoint in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Where's this CenterPoint at?
Yeah, it's somewhere over toward the east. I don't know. Yeah, it's looking great, by the way. If you haven't been out there, we've put down quite a little bit of concrete recently, curb and gutter, a lot of sidewalks down. They've tore the ditch wall out on Platte Avenue, which has changed the entire landscape of that. It's pretty cool. And we're in the process of bringing that grade back up for the turn lane that comes in and the axle lane that'll go out. So, yeah, things are moving along rapidly now. So, looks great out there. It's fun to do.
Removed as much of that bank as they're going to?
Yeah, yeah. There'll be a small section that you see that's still there that remains. That ditch is pretty close in there, so we have to leave some of that slope wall in there. But when it's all cleaned up, it'll look pretty nice.
Do we know, that's slightly off topic, do we know how long it'll take before they'll have that second lane on thirty-four open? That's the most common question.
Yeah, it's a good question. We're probably at least a month away, if not longer. You know, now we've got kind of a hole there off to the side where they've excavated for the roadway. They'll be bringing that back up, but they've got a lot of concrete work to do in there. And they want to pave all of that at one time, those turn lanes and Saunders down to Beaver, Beaver over to Linda. They kind of want to pave all that at the same time, mow bin once. So it's going to be six weeks or eight weeks before that's totally opened up, I think.
People just aren't quite used to, like, rush hour traffic.
Right.
You know, thirty-four, they have to wait while people turn on Linda to go to Edwards.
Come to go to Denver at four o'clock.
I'm with you.
They'll love it coming out.
Go to Denver any time.
One lane's a piece of cake.
Yeah.
Steve, they won't be able to turn in from the opposite lane, right? They won't be able to turn left or turn west out of there?
It is a full movement intersection, so left in, left out is allowed, yep.
And no light, that's the other question.
No traffic signal at the moment.
Will there be a turning lane westbound coming that way, so they can turn in?
Yeah, I believe there is. It's been a while since I've looked at that striping diagram, but I'm almost certain there's a D cell lane to turn left in.
Okay, thank you.
No, they're not putting a turning circle there.
Thank you.
I heard all kinds of speculation of what you guys are doing out there this weekend, as you probably did too.
Yep.
Pretty exciting what we're getting out there, huh?
So with that, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving and accepting the bid from Earth Engineering in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars to complete the QCQA testing for the construction of Phase Two elements of the CenterPoint Plaza subdivision.
Second. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Steve. Next is a presentation authorizing the city to seek an increase in the credit line established with Bank of the West. Ms. Kenny.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The resolution that you have before you is necessary for us to increase our credit limit on our purchasing card for the city. The amount that they recommended was one million dollars. We now have it at four hundred thousand. It's important to keep in mind that the amount that we can use for our actual city purchasing card, our accounts payable card, is only one-half of the amount, not only, I mean, five hundred thousand's a lot of money, but it would be five hundred thousand dollars. We need to do this because there are times when, if our payment is made one day beyond their crossover period, that that carries through for the whole next month and increases the amount that we have charged. Also, it's necessary because over the past few years, we have increased the amount that we use our purchasing card for everything. Sometimes we buy large pieces of equipment if they let us, if the vendor lets us, because then we get a very small percent back. But when it's a larger amount of money, it matters. Last year, we got a six thousand dollar amount back from the card company. The year before, we got four. So maybe this year, we'll get eight. I don't know. But as we use it more, we need to have it available. And there is no cost to us for it to be higher. We don't pay anything. So it's just an availability. Any questions?
None for me. Anybody else? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would...
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to authorize the city to seek an increase in the credit line limit established with Bank of the West.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Jeanie. Next is an update on new marketing coordinator position. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a position we started talking about earlier this year, the council retreat, discussing what we might be looking at for assisting in making sure we are being effective in our marketing campaigns throughout the city. Right now, a lot of the departments do their own marketing campaigns. It's left up to the managers to take care of that. Sometimes that takes backseat. We don't get the information out as best as we could. For example, you know, the golf course is responsible for their campaigns, rec department's responsible for their campaigns. We find that, you know, there are a lot of departments that could do a better job of putting out more information if they have the resources. Some of the things that we do now that we want to highlight and do better at even relate to our utilities. For example, the call before your dig information that we're required to put out could be enhanced. And it also would assist the PIO with press releases. So we're looking at, and we discussed this position, like I said, in February, we also talked about it again, a recent check-in with the city manager, myself. And I told you I'd bring back information prior to moving forward with going out to look for this individual. We determined that it was probably more of an urgency at this time, just given all the different things that are going on in the city and what we want to market, which would include some of our economic development stuff. This person would also be responsible for social media and managing all the social media accounts for the city and making sure that the information is going out on a regular basis. And so at this point, we've got a job description drafted. We've got a placeholder for next year's budget to put them in. And this year, we're going to try and absorb them in the current budget. And we'll bring that information back when we get ready to do, I believe they'll fall under John's budget, when we put them in there for next year. So, John, was there anything that I missed on that position?
No, I don't think so.
All right. So if you have any questions before we move forward with that, it'll probably take us a couple months or three months to hire this position. So we don't anticipate that they'll be on board until probably the last quarter of the year, start the process.
And they'll be cross-utilized for all the departments?
Yes.
All the way through PD and everything, so?
Mm-hmm. Yep. PD will be able to use them for, you know, social media stuff, their press releases and those kinds of things, kind of like they use John now, but it'll be an extra person, so they'll have additional resources to do that.
Questions for Mr. Wells?
I'm excited that we're moving forward with it. I think it'll be a big benefit.
Thank you.
Next is update on a records clerk position for the police department. Chief Schultz.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We have an emergency request for an additional records clerk. Eight years ago, we had three records clerks on board. There was a study in the police department, and that number of records clerks was reduced to two. In the ensuing eight years, there's been a tremendous increase in workload, mandated state requirements, unfunded mandates that the records clerks are responsible for. And frankly, they're not able to keep up. We've been putting Band-Aids on it. And it's reached a point where it's a critical need. So as we had discussed, we would like permission to initiate an immediate hire. It's revenue neutral. We have salary savings in our budget at the halfway point for 2019's budget. In the salary line item, we were at forty-two percent spent at fifty percent of the year, so we can absorb this cost. We would like to make that, I mentioned, an immediate hire as soon as we can get that person on board. I've met with HR. We've reviewed the job description. We're ready to move forward if we have your approval.
So you're going with full-time?
Yes, sir.
As opposed to part-time, or fifty percent right now?
Yes, full-time. And we anticipate by the time we get that person on board, we'll be well into the third quarter of the year.
It'll take long for that to get here.
Well, it won't.
Yeah, we're almost, we're almost there. So, any questions or comments for Chief?
Seems like it makes sense. I mean, you've got to love all those unfunded mandates that come down the pike and, you know...
One of the main things we were hit with, as we're all law enforcement in Colorado, is an item called e-discovery. And it requires, by statute, that all records related to criminal justice be sent electronically to the DA's office. And that includes tickets, reports, arrests. Those have to be made available for discovery by the defense. That takes up a tremendous amount of time. And with a staff that was at one-time three, that's now two with that new unfunded mandate. You can see the critical need we have.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Twenty-twenty budget calendar, self-insurance fund. Ms. Kirk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hello.
We're going to be discussing the self-insurance fund, zero-three-eight fund, which contains the revenues and expenses for medical, dental, vision, prescription, property casualty, which is handled through SIRSa, workers' comp, which is handled through Pinnacle, life insurance, accidental death and dismemberment insurance, COBRA, short-term disability, and the stop-loss. So stop-loss is the insurance layer that handles the claims over eighty-five thousand. I'm going to talk in generalities on this tonight, as the renewals are still outstanding for SIRSa. I don't anticipate a lot of difference from last year as far as the rates and the increases to the self-insurance fund. And the reason why is our healthcare is doing very well. One of the things that we look at from year to year are the total plan costs versus the budget utilization. And this year, in the same timeframe, the plans are running at ninety-eight percent overall, and the claims are higher, but they're still within budgeted limits at this time. It's, what drives up costs are, as you know, utilization of our plans. We have a plan in our current plan design that is being utilized the most. It has, year over year, shown to be running very high. This year, it's running at a hundred and seventy-three percent of budget utilization. And these numbers vary throughout the year, so it's important to take that into consideration as well. But we are looking to make a change this year in our healthcare and eliminate what's called the buy-up PPO plan. And we believe that because this is the highest utilization plan, we will keep our utilization in check by designing a plan to move these employees who utilize into a cheaper plan, basically. But the healthcare itself is going to still be of quality. So we're looking to add another high deductible plan and keep that as our free plan. Our current high deductible plan will then be a pay plan, meaning the employees will be paying a premium for that, and continuing with our base PPO plan as well. So Hub has done some modeling along with the renewal analysis that they gave us, looking at the plan design for 2020. And we're definitely thinking that we're going to be able to offer a less expensive product in the plan design and keeping our overall costs down and in check, and possibly even lower the costs, depending if the employees decide to choose that plan or not. I don't anticipate there being a radically different high deductible plan between the two. It's not going to be like a skyrocketing twelve thousand or fifteen thousand dollar plan. But it will be somewhat different for the employees. And it's going to be kind of a different mindset for them during open enrollment, so. So at this time, we're looking to increase the self-insurance fund, which has been the pattern in practice over the past few years, buy three percent and continue to pass on the healthcare premium at ten percent to the employee. And like I said, this has been the practice over the past few years, and it's kind of kept everything in check. I do believe that we will see a difference in our premium percentage costs to decrease this year if we do go with a new plan design. The property casualty fund, I just completed a renewal at that, at the end of June. And basically, SIRSa has also sent out a comprehensive auditor to look at all of our structures owned in the city. They do this about once every ten years. So, like I said, I'm talking in generalities with this renewal. The other wild card here is the hail damage that was incurred in a lot of the SIRSa cities last year in 2018. That could possibly affect our pricing as well. So that's kind of why I'm going with generalities here. So, any questions?
If I could just add really quick, you know, I think when we come and present this stuff to City Council, you just see, well, we're looking at adjusting these numbers and these numbers. But I want to give you a little bit of background of the work that Susan's doing with Hub and with John to address... to address and maintain quality healthcare for our employees. We meet, we've been looking at a lot of different outside-the-box opportunities and options. For the last seven years, we've been trying to work with the hospital, and we continue to work with the hospital, come up with ways that we can come up with more affordable and access, accessible care for our employees. We know that we, on a certain level, we want our employees to access our healthcare. We want them to be well. We want them to address issues before they become, I guess, problematic. That makes them better employees, more productive, and everything else. So some of the things that we have been kicking around and looking at, and before I go into that, I want to make it clear that we've been talking to employees for the last two years about eliminating the buy-up plan, so it won't be a surprise to any of the employees that we've been looking at eliminating this plan. Our goal is to give our employees the best quality plan, and then also access to the best quality services in healthcare within the community. Some of the things that we're looking at is to help with the changes in the plans is to come up with a clinic or a standalone clinic that would cooperate with the hospital and work with the hospital. We still don't know exactly what that looks like, but the plan we're looking at would then provide healthcare directly to our employees with a provider that is dedicated to our employees, so that they can go and visit that person and have that access and ongoing relationship. So we're looking at a standalone clinic. Other businesses in the community have already looked at this. I know that the school district is looking at this, and we're working with them as well. But just to point out that we are looking outside the box, or thinking outside the box, of what traditional plan, healthcare plans have been, and how do we address those issues with our employees to make sure that they have the high-quality plan and access to healthcare that's gonna make their lives better and maintain the budget that we have to work within to make that happen. So what Susan has presented is, is, I think, very good to say, here's what we're doing next year, but it's also simplistic in the sense that we're thinking about a lot of different things moving forward. And one of the big parts, this is, this is the most or second most, depending on what you ask employees benefit that we provide to them, is their healthcare benefit. And so we're very careful in working with our employees when we make adjustments to this plan, and we help them understand the economics behind it, as well as the impacts that it'll have on them. And I know open enrollment, Susan does a really good job with Hub and the various companies to explain, this is what we're doing and this is how it works. One other thing I'd point out, as far as service goes in the HR department, as well as with Hub and our other third-party administrator, is that if at any time an employee has a problem with a bill or, or something, they get direct service through our department here at the city and Hub and everything else, so that we try and make this as simple for our employees as possible, so.
Hub's been a great partner.
So you're looking at keeping the base plan and then offering to higher deductible options?
High deductible health plans, yeah, with a match, with our HSA, our health savings account match.
How many people are in the buy-up plan?
Right now, we have, it's probably a very low number. It's about thirteen that are in the buy-up plan. The rest of them are in our base and are high deductible. But they are very large utilizers of the plan, so.
So just a question, you're the experts on these, are more knowledgeable. Is there any potential for going out with the school district, the county? I know a lot of larger groups get better rates or opportunities for health insurance. Is that something that could be looked at? I mean, that would benefit all the larger entities in our county?
Well, the county participates in, like...
And are you able to separate the cost and management of it if, if it's just a consolidated group that goes in, but each is responsible for their own portion of it?
I would say that's probably easier done, maybe on a clinic level, rather than a total insurance fund. Some of these are fully insured. We're self-insured. The products are different that are offered. There are, you know, Hub is one of those companies that does do, you know, pooling of their assets and their resources with other entities here in Colorado. Yeah, we could look at it. There are trusts out there that pool like entities together, but it usually is under one big umbrella.
I believe the county's already under a pooled plan with other counties?
Correct.
And, I don't know.
I'm just throwing that out.
It's an option. They don't have to be included. I'm just...
Yeah, school districts have their own. In Glenwood Springs, where I'm from, we were pulled in with school districts and colleges and things like that. But it was more of a rural, you know, area with smaller options, so.
It definitely would make sense, I would think, especially with the clinic-ing, the clinic portion. I mean, where, you know, if you were able to even bring in some of the larger employers. I mean, I know Cargill already has something like that, but if we were to look at pulling that with maybe like a La Prino and some of these others that are, have similar mindsets for wellness, you might be able to, you know, bring everybody's costs down.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thanks, Susan.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
So now we go from healthcare and insurance to water.
Care.
To water care, yeah, so Eric Sagel, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Twenty twenty. Alright, for my water budget, there really aren't a whole lot of changes on it, so I'll just kind of go over the, the amounts that I've kind of changed around a little bit. First one is rent. I've increased that one up to eighteen thousand from sixteen, and we just did that, just kind of matched the, the spending that's been going on throughout the years. What that one covers, basically, the biggest portion of that one goes to paying for our railroad crossings, and when our lines are within the railroad right-of-way or easement, we have to pay a rent fee for that in order to have that allowed, so. The next one I have is our engineering and consulting. We've dropped that back down to ten thousand from twenty. We had increased that for the GIS system, for the water system, and so they've gotten, got that, they're working on that now, so they didn't need that money allotted for it anymore, so we've dropped that back down. But then the next one we've increased by ten thousand is litigation, and there's some upcoming requirements that are potential for that. And Brent Nation has more details on that if you need any, if you have questions on that. But he likes when I throw him in there, so. Then we'll jump to capital. I'm asking for six hundred and seventy-five thousand for our water mains, and that's for the replacement, basically upgrade of our, our aging infrastructure, and also to, well, basically, that's, that's what it's for, is just our aging infrastructure. We had to, we increased it a little bit because of the Center Point project. We're trying to, try and stay ahead of the roads going in for East Beaver by changing out an old fourteen-inch transite line that goes through there and upgrading it to a sixteen-inch PVC line, so we're just trying to stay ahead of the game on that. And then I'm asking for the replacement of a two thousand and six Chevy half-ton. So I'm looking at fifty thousand on that. That truck right now, it's, it's got ninety thousand miles, and it is very rapidly falling apart, unfortunately. So that's what we're looking at there. And then the, well, that's it. So, do we have any questions? Well, Brent wants to talk.
So before the headline in the paper says, "City to spend more on litigation", I wanted to clarify that. So we foresee some potential water court cases coming up that involve the ditch systems that we're in. I'm hoping that they're gonna be coming around next year. They may not, but that's what I've been told. In water court, for those on council that aren't familiar with it, you get involved in other people's cases by filing objections to their, you become a party to their case. And so it takes our water attorney to do that and, and a lot of paperwork just to get in and make sure that our water rights are being protected as they move forward with the water rights that they're either trying to change or do things with. And so it's in our best interest to do those things. We will come to council if we, you know, get into those cases. That's just, that's the line item where we have that money. And like I said, I've been told that there may be a couple of cases coming down the pike towards us next year, and so I just want to make sure we've got enough in there that we can cover that. So if they do show up, we're, we're in those cases and can protect ourselves if, if necessary, so. That's all it is. It's nothing in particular at this point, so.
Nothing juicy.
So, any other questions or?
It'll be a good year.
Okay, thank you very much.
And now we go to the water treatment plant with Mr. O'Connes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Hello.
How are you?
Mr. O'Connes?
Yes, sir. So you should have the twenty twenty budget in front of you for the water treatment plant. Got some changes on here, and then later on, hopefully Brent Nation will come up and assist me as well.
The big ones, right?
Yes, ma'am. What's not on this, on this budget is we were hoping to ask for a, a one-time, full-time employee for the water treatment plant. We've actually been short since about 2012, 2013. We were originally a six-man department. We've been running on five. We've been sustaining. But when you've got employees that are on their regular time off, and then you've got people that are asking for vacation, it starts to thin us out quite a bit. So to eliminate some of the overtime, and I actually jumped in quite a bit to help out, this would, this would really help out the department. So we're asking for that in twenty twenty. Got some line items here that I did increase, like outside lab services I did, did decrease. We're no longer in twenty twenty required to do any kind of EPA sampling. We'll be done with that this year, but it will resume again in twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-two. Lab, see, lab chemicals. Just to match what we're actually spending right now, I did up that to twenty-three thousand, up six, up three hundred dollars. Reservoir maintenance, I did up that to an even two thousand from fifteen hundred. We've got some pumps out there that need to be worked on. Right now, they don't alter, alternate the way they should. We don't run them all the time, but we, when we turn them on, we want them to operate the way they should, so we need some work done on those pumps that take the decant water over to the reservoir. Let me see. Maintenance on the storage tank, now that the ST Health Department has implemented the tank rule inspection, we do a lot more inspection on the tanks. One of the things that's a concern is we need some safety railings around the overflow. So we got hatches on both tanks overflow. Those tanks are thirty-two feet high, and there's no, there's no safety barrier that protects the operators. There is on the ladder going into the tank, but not on the outside where the overflow is. You're really close to the edge there. Few of us, not too fond of being that close to the edge, so we're looking for some safety railing on that to be welded in place. Office supplies did increase that. We've got some supplies, office chairs that are, that are old and need to be replaced. Everything on this side seems to be, didn't change anything. Second page, we're looking at maintenance, general property. That has been increasing, a lot of, lot of property maintenance. We're also maintaining the property that the council had purchased, all the land around the property. We do have the resident just to the north, actually to the south, the south of us, that does maintain the property, because he does lease cattle, or lease the land for cattle. We do supply him with fencing and t-pots and stuff like that, so I did increase that up to sixteen thousand. Uniforms, what they added employee, hopefully. I did up that from two thousand to twenty-five hundred. CBT water assessments, as usual, with the assessment, the units that we own, the city owns for water, those go up every year. Where I'm actually upping that to thirty thousand, from three hundred and thirty thousand to three hundred and sixty thousand. Just assessments, they go up every year. The pipeline assessment fees, we just bumped that up to ten thousand. They're right around two hundred and fifty. Northerners predicting that they'd be pretty close to about the same. I just upped it as a cushion to ten thousand. They always tell me two hundred and fifty thousand, they're always a little bit over, so just, just to cover that. Water lease, that's one of the items that I would like to leave for Brent to maybe help out later. And let me see. Maintenance, plant equipment, we just upped that from forty thousand to forty-two thousand. Plant maintenance, that deals with any kind of equipment, dealing with like pumps. We did have a pump that go bad this past year, cost of seventeen thousand to replace, so it's not, it's not, not cheap. In fact, we've got a backwash return pump station that's gonna need, need some attention this next year. So we got some sales, seals that are failing, failing in it as well. Nisp participation fees, original, last, last year, they were eight hundred and ten dol, eight hundred, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. Those fees are going up to nine hundred thousand. That's our portion for Nisp participation fees. We've got some, let's see, lamp purchase for Nisp, which I'm gonna ask Brent to assist me on. The Easton Pump Station, another one of Brent's. And then we've got lab equipment. Our lab equipment, we've got some turbidimeters. We've got seven turbidimeters in the plant. Technology is changing and changing rapidly. We have the old, we have the style with the lamp and the lens. Technology is now, now they're looking at lasers. Our benchtop turbidimeter in the lab is also a lamp and a lens. We got way better turbid than what we're getting right now off, off of our current equipment. If we can get updated equipment, these lasers, these laser type, we could definitely get better and more accurate readings on our turbidities. So, soda ash grinder, that is something that's been an issue for the plant, because we do get soda, we have soda ash that we use to adjust the pH in the water. Soda ash tends to get chunky in the, in the soda ash silo. It sits over, over time, it just develops hard chunks. The auger that's there now has a hard time chewing those up and spitting them out. In two thousand, in two thousand and eighteen, this year, we had many, many after-hour phone calls, middle-of-night phone calls, because our pH has fallen up, because there's just too many chunks that can't be chewed up and, and used in the process. We have to go out there and bolt it, clean it out. Grinder would eliminate a lot of that hassle, and that's been an ongoing process since I think the soda ash in the plant was actually installed. We've just been dealing with it, so. Any questions?
So are the turbidimeters the original ones that were in there when the plant was started?
Not the original ones. It's just the old style of the lamp and the lens. We've upgraded every time that, that Hawk has come out with a new turbidimeter. Now they're coming out with a laser one. They're gonna start phasing out these style of, of turbidimeters that we have. They're gonna supply parts for it, but they're gonna fade them out. We got the seventeen-twenty E. That's the latest one, and they're just gonna start fading those out, and a lot of them are going to more of a laser, more accurate turbidimeter reading. And we want, we're looking for, when it comes to the, the benchtop turbidimeters, want to be able to match what that turbidimeter is gonna be reading as well. You know, if we get something that's reading small and tight, we want that to read the same thing on the benchtop, because we're gonna be calibrating the two, so, yep. But they're phasing them out, so we just want to keep up with the times.
As of December of this year, the plant's twenty years old.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, my turn. I like being able to just jump into their budgets with the big-ticket items, so. Yeah, as Al alluded to, the water lease line item that you see in here is the lease that we have with Riverside Irrigation. We kind of refer to it as our insurance policy, depending on what the quota gets set at, and we need that water to make sure that we have enough for doing business. We are in the middle of negotiations with Riverside in renewing that lease. We will be coming back to council in, I think, the second meeting in August with an executive session and cover where we are with negotiations and where we would like to see... was hopefully relatively close to where we'll be looking at. But for right now, it's still a little bit up in the air on that one. Al hit on the Nisp participation fees, that 900,000 that he mentioned, that goes to further the last kind of steps of the permitting that we're in this year, some of the carryover stuff that'll happen then and next year. It also continues with some of the engineering work on the roadways, some of the preliminary geotechnical work. It kind of keeps us moving at the slower pace until we see where the potential lawsuit and all this other stuff falls out. And so that makes sure that we have money for all the consultants and everything that we're using as participants. The next line item that you see, the 1.8 million, that, I came to you a couple of months ago and asked for a commitment of up to $6 million. That is that commitment. We've now scaled that back after a lot of discussions amongst the participants for next year. Because of the pretending, potential litigation, once we get the permit and everything, the group decided that, you know, maybe the entire $70 million was too much to bite off and let's take a step back. And so next year's obligation is 1.8. And so there is a formalized agreement being placed together. And as far as I know, there's a lot of attorneys involved in that, and I'm thinking Nina is now involved in that. And so I luckily don't have to sit through all those conversations. So we'll have that agreement to bring to you once it gets formalized and then we'll get official approval for that expenditure later this year. So, but that's what the 1.8 million dollars is. And then the 3.5 is the current placeholder for the construction of the pump station. We just authorized the half a million dollars to come out of this year's budget. This is the remainder of our portion of that construction. That is the high-end number. We are still waiting for the construction biz to come back as we speak, and so we'll have a better number. I'm hoping we have a solid number before you guys formalize the budget in October so we can plug in what we actually know we'll need from the bid amounts, so.
So the water lease that we're doing with Riverside, are we still under that same contract or agreement that we had years ago based on the cost of the current cost of units?
Yeah, so the original, for those of you that aren't familiar with it, when they, when they wrote this original agreement to lease these shares of water from Riverside, they made an attempt to have the lease amount subject to what the value of CBT water was going for. And so there's this convoluted formula that's in there. It's not convoluted, but it's a little bit difficult to arrive at the same answer when everybody looks at it. And we have finally just, but the city had a cap put in it and said, yes, we love this number or this calculation, but we never want to pay more than this cap amount. Well, we reached that cap amount years ago, several years ago, and we've just been paying that cap amount ever since. And now we're up for negotiations and the board would like to revisit. They don't like the cap, obviously, and that's just part of their negotiation. And so, so yeah, so there is a formula, but we haven't used it for probably six, maybe seven years now, so.
And we plan to bring a presentation back to council, talk a little bit about this, and then obviously we'll be going into negotiations with Riverside. And it's always been very amicable. They're very good to work with and have always been a good partner with the city.
Absolutely.
Brent, this might sound like a rookie question, but with all the growth we're trying to bring into the city, any issues with water supply?
Um, Al, is there any issues with water supply?
I mean, it's actually-- It's a finite resource.
Yeah, it's, if you look at the demand, I mean, just Friday, we were like holding steady at 7.2 MGD, and we're actually a 10 MGD plant, so we're creep, we're steadily creeping up.
Okay.
That, we, when we started, the money that's going towards this pump station, you probably weren't on council when I first started coming and having the discussions about whether we should even be looking at building this. And part of that is, is that the pipeline that brings the water to us is our first major impediment because there is a restriction, there's a rather large restriction at Fort Lupton, and we were at a point to where we were receiving as much water as we could into our treatment facility, the land there. And it's, that started to worry us a couple summers ago that, okay, we need to start taking care of this first bottleneck. And so that's why we went ahead as the city, went back to the rest of the participant group in this pump station and said, we're ready to trigger construction, let's go ahead and get it built. So that alleviates that part of the equation. Overall water quantity, that's where the Riverside lease is important to us. That lease gives us enough water to take care of all of the city's current demands and a lot of unforeseen demands. It's a large pool of water. Oh, you know, that's why it's so expensive to hold on to. We do our best to lease it out and we don't utilize it, but it does definitely cover that. It is basically an offset to what we would get from NISP, once we get deliverable product out of NISP. The final obstruction to water to the city of Fort Morgan will be treatment capacity. Once we bump up against that 10 MGD, we will be having discussions, or before we get to that point, we'll be having discussions about expansion of our water treatment facility. Now, with that said, we do have partners in that. Quality Water District has an IGA with us because we do treat part of their water for them through our facility, and they pay, you know, for that gallons that we treat. They do have an obligation to any, you know, expansion of the facility and they will help with some of those costs. But once we get there, those discussions will be had. So that's kind of the, your major portions that we're looking at, and we've tried to solve them in different steps and not all at once, so.
I've been told I need to come to see you for Water 101.
I would be happy to meet you.
On a napkin.
Buy you a lunch.
One other, one other thing that we're doing and that we do in the city of Fort Morgan that I think is exceptional, not all communities are doing this and are looking into it, is we have a non-potable system as well. A lot of our acres of grass and parks, cemetery, is done by a non-potable system, which is completely separate. And as we look at expanding some of these neighborhoods, we're looking at a potable, non-potable mix so that we can expand, I guess, extend the life of our potable system by watering outside with the non-potable system. So we're, we're doing a lot of things like Brent said.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's it. Thank you. So now we're going to have Eric come back. We should have just had you do both. Eric's department is the water distribution and wastewater collection, so he takes care of everything in town.
Hello again.
Kind of the middleman. All right, so for the collection side of it, again, I'll just kind of touch on the different differences and capital and all that. So the first thing that we are asking for is going to be a full-time employee to add to our department. Right now, this is basically a department of two people. And the way it works right now, there's two people, two large pieces of equipment. So basically, they do all of their running around stuff in the morning, and then once they go out to start jetting and cammering, there's not a whole lot else they can do. They're basically tied to that equipment because they're sending this equipment hundreds of feet into lines. They can't really stop what they're doing and go do an emergency locate. They can't go do inspections. They can't do a whole number of things that sometimes come up unexpectedly, and then just daily duties as well. So we've kind of been, we've been operating on two for a long time, and it's, staff has been requesting this for a while, and we've kind of been, it's been something we've definitely been looking at for a long time. And then kind of the, the thing that really triggered it at this point was my lead operator kind of gave me his ultimatum. I've got about two to three years left with him before he's planning on retiring. So I kind of want to get this ball rolling now, get somebody fully trained so they know what to do, and then also get my current other operator up to snuff, so then hopefully he might want to step into that lead operator role when it comes to that point. And then he'll have a fully trained operator, and then we'll look at possibly, look at hiring a new one at that point within the three people in order to get them trained and up to, up to snuff on everything. So that's what we're looking at there. For maintenance of collection, I did increase that by 10,000. We are constantly finding new things that need to be repaired. Spot repairs in lines, manholes need to be relined or replaced or added, bless you. So there's, there's a whole number of things. The maintenance is always increasing, so I've increased that one. The maintenance of lift station, I've increased that one for this year because we need to start looking at replacing the pumps that are in that lift station. That, that lift station went online late 2006, early 2007, so it's due for some new pumps to go in there. They've, they run quite often, so we definitely don't want them to go down. So, and then we're also going to be adding an approach to this lift station. Unfortunately, the design and the placement of this lift station at the time, it's, it functions great as a lift station, so there's no problems there, but maintenance-ing it is kind of an issue. After so long, you'll start to get a buildup of sediment, rocks, blocks of wood, all kinds of fun construction stuff, mop handles, anything that people can shove in a sewer will end up there, and it gets trapped at the bottom, the pump can't send it out. So we, in order to take care of that, we have to get our jet truck up to it and then drop the vac tube down in there and back out all of that stuff and increase the capacity and make sure that the pumps don't get damaged by all of this material. So far, we've been very lucky, but we definitely need to, this is something we've been looking at addressing for a while, so we're going to basically build a, an approach to it. We have to do kind of a cut into the embankment that's around that so we can get the truck up to it at the right height in order to put the vac tube down into there to maintenance that. So we're going to be doing that as well next year. I've increased rent, again, just to match the spending, and it's, it's for the same stuff that's on the water side, our railroad crossings and things of that nature. I've increased the telephone line item just to match spending as well. Down in engineering and consulting, that one has dropped down from 20,000 down to 2,000. Again, that was for the GIS system. They, they got their money from last year, so now they can, they're, they're working on it right now, so they don't need that. So we move into capital. For our sewer main replacements, I did increase this one by 250,000 from our normal 300,000 that we asked for because we have to, again, it's for Center Point, we have to service some of the lots out there with a new sewer main that isn't there right now. So we're going to have to extend some mains out into that area, and so that's going to help cover the cost of that while still doing our, our main line relining and replacement to go along with the Strickler streets, trying to stay, stay along with them as well. We're going to be replacing our 2,000 Ford one-ton flatbed. This pickup has 108,000 miles on it, and they've done a heck of a job trying to keep it up and running, but it's, it's time to, to replace it, and we're looking at another flatbed with that. Again, and also that one is not a four-wheel drive, and sometimes they go into areas that really needs four-wheel drive, so we're going to replace it with one of those. And then the last capital item I have is a sewer camera and tractor. We just got the, the new system last year, I believe, yeah. And it's a great system. It's working phenomenally for our, our system, but we have found some limitations to it with basically the configuration of some of our manholes. There's just not enough opening in these manholes to get that larger camera tractor into them. So this new unit we're looking at hooks up with the, the existing equipment. It's all integrated into it, but it's a much smaller tractor, so we can get it into the smaller spaces. It'll be used for easement areas as well because that big tractor is quite heavy. And sometimes we have to actually carry it to the manholes and lower it down into the manholes manually instead of using the little winch system that's built into the van. And so we definitely need something slightly lighter than that in order to get into those easement areas. And then also, we're going to use it as a backup in case our other camera system has to go in for any kind of a maintenance. We'll still have a system there so we can keep going. And I believe that's it. You have any questions?
Clarification, this tractor's not like a tractor.
No, no, sorry. It's camera tractor. It's basically, it looks like a little small square with tank wheels on it, so.
A robot.
Yeah, it's a robot, yeah. And then it has a camera mounted on the end of it and goes on down the sewer lines.
In rural areas, people might get a completely different idea of what a tractor is.
All right, thanks, Eric. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're not coming back, are you? This is it? This is it? Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. And now we'll listen to Skip and the wastewater treatment plant.
The other end.
The other end.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Mine's going to be nice and short, sweet. Eric spent all of our money. I, I haven't really made very many changes at all. We have, on the sludge farm maintenance and sludge removal, we had 10,000 on each of those line items last year. I'm going for 25,000 just on one line item. We're using that 20,000 this year to, to repair the road going out to our sludge farm. We get, we get a half inch to an inch of rain and we're two weeks before we can get out there. So the 25,000 we're asking for for next year is for the landing zone where we actually dump the bio solids. That's in a depressed area right now and it turns into a lake, so. It's beautiful this time of year during drought, you've got to like that. Besides that, there was, there was no other changes from last year except for capital improvement. We have two of the old Lamson centrifugal blowers still, one of them from the old plant that we'd like to replace, and they're about 70,000 apiece. Any other questions?
Phenomenal, you're going back with Lamson, they lasted a long time.
Yeah, they do, huh?
I bought those.
These new high-speed turbine blowers that we've been buying are, they are so energy efficient, and they're a much cheaper blower than what those Lamsons are.
Interesting to see how long they last, though, you know.
We've had the K Turbo, the first one, I think we've had it for like seven years, and very little, very little problems with them.
They run a lot.
They run all the time.
Yep.
All right. Skip, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Skip.
So that concludes all the excitement with the 2020 budget for this meeting. I want to thank all of the staff members that put their time into reviewing what their needs are for the upcoming budgets and meeting the expectations, not only of the council, but also the community. And I want to thank them for the high level of service that they provide for the city. One of the things that you'll notice with adding new employees, we want to make sure that you're aware of that and understand the reasons why we're looking at that. As part of the 2020 year of the employee process, we're going to be looking at all of the departments and determining and making sure we have capacity to meet the level of service that council comes to expect from each of these departments. And so we're looking at these needs now and into next year more thoroughly. So, thank you, and if you have any questions on any of these budgets down the road, please feel free to let me know, we can get you answers.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes Item A, second reading and final action on ordinance number 1234, rezoning Center Point Plaza Lot 1 and authorization to publish by title only. Item B, approval of the disbursements and payroll for June. And Item C, approval of the minutes of the July 2nd, 2019 City Council regular meeting. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Have a resolution by Allison Howe, second by Lisa Northrup. Roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is public comment or audience participation. Is there anybody that wishes to address?
Hi, Mayor and Council.
Sign in, please. It's a formality.
And if we don't do it upfront, we'll forget to do it at all, and then John will be mad.
Now that I've signed everything away, my name's Dusty Johnson and I work with-- So now that I've signed everything away, my name's Dusty Johnson, and I work with the Office of Congressman Ken Buck, District 4 for Colorado's representative. He covers 23 counties, and is serving his third term in Congress. And so I was hoping, if this is the appropriate time, if you'd all let me just give you a brief update. Yeah, so just for reference, for some of these bills and amendments that he does, he is on the committees for Judiciary and Foreign Affairs. And so Congressman Buck is a founding co-chair of the new bipartisan War Powers Caucus. Congress has a duty to the Constitution and to the American people to declare and oversee our country's war efforts, but members have let this power gradually decline, turning over decision-making to the executive branch. This caucus is a group of lawmakers that will work to reclaim legislative authority over war-making activities. The congressman has also co-sponsored HR 3237, the Platte River Recovery Implamation Program Extension Act. And so this is legislation that would allow Congress to work with the Secretary of Interior to improve the habitats of endangered species, allow new and existing water development in the South Platte and North Platte River basins, along with working to de-list the interior eastern type of bird. I had to look that up too, so I wanted to make sure I said bird. And so then, just three more things, is we're really excited to announce that, just within District 4 alone, I'm not sure the total count for Colorado, but we've had nominated and appointed, then accepted, 14 students to U.S. service academies. And so we're excited to see these young men and women off into their military career. This is a four-year commitment, plus then a service term, with each academy having a different, depending on the branch. They will be in 2023, and we will watch them throughout the years, and then follow them through to graduation, and then their, I guess they'd be commissioned, service. So we're excited about that, and one of the things we do as a congressional office, and we do work with the senator offices, is helping young students, generally seniors, but we can help get them started junior, sophomore year, because it is a lengthy process, for those who do want to apply for a service academy. Our office also offers internship programs, both here in District, through our Castle Rock Greeley office, along with DC. And one of these programs that we offer is called the Diversity Internship Program. The congressman has started this program, and it's in its third summer. So, within our office, we have placed 20 minority interns from around the country into different conservative offices. We try to connect them with their home state, if possible, or the home state that they're going to college of their interest. And so the purpose of this is just to get as many people as we can, we like to call them young professionals. Generally, they're college-aged, we have had some high schoolers, we've had some graduated from college, trying to get them connected with the congressional branch, or helping connect them to executive and other branches as they see interest. And that is what we have. Just one last thing I want to leave, is if you ever have any issues, concerns, questions, or grants with a federal agency, our office can act as a liaison for that. So if you, yourself, your board constituents that you know of, examples would be VA benefits, social security, visas, USDA, as we see the foreign bill come out, and every other list you can think of under the federal agencies. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dusty.
Thanks for what you guys do.
Anybody else? Reports by officials and staff.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a few things, and then we'll see if anybody else has some announcements. Just want to remind and invite everybody out to, I believe, this week's Thursday Night Live. We have a special guest, singer coming to visit us this week, has a lot of appearances, is, I guess, a primary star in various TV series and other appearances, but we're very excited to have Emily Kenny, the daughter of our treasurer, coming to sing to us on Thursday night. She has, is, is a big star, coming to town. So, we're excited, invite everybody out to see that, she'll be doing autographs and singing for us. So, Thursday Night Live gets better and better, want to thank all of our staff for their efforts in making that a big thing. Want to thank also everyone for the Bob Stock, I guess, extravaganza this weekend, and not just our staff, but the local businesses that really support that activity within our community. I think we need to also thank them for their generous support. Center Point, as, has been talked about, is moving forward very quickly. You're seeing a lot of changes, and that's necessary for the future development of housing, which we'll be talking about later. The city center development group has been meeting regularly. We're getting to a point where we're going to have more stakeholders involved in that process, and we bring stuff back to council in the next few months to discuss where we need to go with various buildings that are being designed with our DOLA grant. And then finally, just want to put in a plug for one of our services here in the city. If you haven't been to the library lately, you should go, we have a lot of great books in there to read. But, if you can't make it to the library, the other thing is, if they don't have books that you want, they will order books that you want. So if you have something that you'd like to read and check out, and it's not there, they will definitely look to get the books that our community wants. But they also have online books, and I want to point out that if you can't make it to the library, you can go online, and we have online books that can be read by various electronic readers, and you can read them just about anywhere. So, even if you just have a smartphone. So, want to thank everybody at the library and the museum for what they do, and just put in a plug for that service, which I think is a great benefit to our community. While the kids are out of school, we have summer reading programs and other things to keep our kids' minds focused on some academic activities. So, was there anybody else that had any other, yes, chief?
Happy to report that we've ran the crime numbers for the first half of the year, and crime is down 42% for the first six months of 2019, as compared to the first six months of 2018. So that's, that's good news.
Very good.
Very good.
Brent?
So, question, was I the only one in the room that understood what she was talking about when she said Platte River Recovery Program?
Probably.
Okay. That, that was very big news. Just to reiterate, we, we as a state belong to a three, three-state coalition, basically, to solve a lot of problems that we're having with endangered species down in the state of Nebraska. And we basically can't do large water projects in the state of Colorado without the efforts that are being undertaken by the, the states as a whole. I'm fortunate enough that several years ago, I was asked to sit on the board for Colorado's portion of what we do. We could not belong to NISP if we did not have the efforts of the group of SPRAP, and all the efforts that are being done through the Platte River Recovery Program. So, a lot of good things being done down there to help protect the environment, to help protect a bunch of species that they've, you know, deemed years ago that were threatened or endangered. They have done so well with some of them, that they're talking about removing them off of certain lists, which is always a good thing. But, we were at a point to where we needed an extension from the federal government in order to make sure that these programs went forward, which, to us as NISP participants, was very important to hear, because we didn't want any more federal intervention during this process of getting this project moved forward. And so it was very good news to us as the city to hear that, and then, as being on the board of SPRAP for the state, it was also very good news for us that those things were moving along very positively. So, I just wanted to reiterate that, I know, to me, it's more exciting than it may be to you guys, but, you know, it's definitely filled my mailbox a couple times over the last couple of weeks, so, good news there. Did you want me to say something about the? Just in case anybody asks, yes, there is water leaking out of Barlow Road, just south of Highway 34, we're very aware of that, it's not potable water, it is irrigation water that's leaking out of a broken pipe that goes to the ground on the east side of the road. It's been leaking slowly, we're gonna wait to see what it's gonna take to possibly fix it, but right now, with it being used, there's not a lot we could do to it, so, we're just gonna monitor it. It's a, we pulled up the construction plans, it's just a small 18-inch pipe down there that they're, they free-flow water through, and it comes up on the far side. And so, I don't think we're in any danger of the road collapsing or anything, and everybody's been watching Highway 36 on the news lately, and things can get out of control quickly, but that's not gonna happen there. But we're very aware of the situation, and we're monitoring it, and we'll take care of it when we can get in and take a good look at it, so, just so everybody's aware of that.
Thanks, Brent.
Okay.
And does council have any questions or concerns?
I wasn't able to make the downtown business meeting, but can we get a quick update on how that meeting went?
Certainly, I think it went very well. Want to thank the mayor, Dave was there, Doug was there, appreciate your attendance and support. We had several members of the, the planning commission show up to that. But we got some really good feedback from the, the public on what restrictions and allowances they want to have in an overlay zone in the downtown area. We plan to have two or three more meetings, depending on how much work we can get done, but we got some very good feedback from the public at that meeting that will assist us to bring an overlay district ordinance back to the, back to city council for consideration. And I think it will match and meet the, the expectations and needs of the downtown businesses and the community. But I'd say overall, it was really good, and I, you know, asked the mayor to.
I, I think it was very informative, gave staff a lot of direction, and I was very impressed with the way you guys put it together, that little dot board was, was a hit with the adults.
And, and just stay tuned, we have another fun activity for the next meeting. It won't just be come and talk, it's, we want to get interactive, so.
Well, and I'd just also say, I, I was impressed at the amount of turnout that we had for it, so, once again, if you want to have a say in it, come out, these guys put in a lot of work to put these together, so, it was very, very informative, and don't let their hard work go to waste.
And, and want to thank Sarah and Steve, they put a lot of work into that as well, and want to thank them for their efforts.
Do we have the next one scheduled?
We don't, I, I think we're looking at August 19th? Yeah, so it's August 19th, an evening meeting, it'll be, that one will be here as well. And we will be sending out emails to all those who did attend, and we're giving notice to the public. So, in approximately a month or so, we'll have the, the second one, so.
I heard from two downtown business owners that they felt that they were listened to, so thanks for being great listeners, city staff.
Pretty good.
Six o'clock.
Yeah, it'll be six o'clock here.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Counsel?
Next item on our agenda is an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-64024E. And for the following additional details are provided for identification purposes, economic incentives. And just for, we will conduct three of these executive sessions consecutively for the exact same purpose. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Your Honor, I have a motion to go into executive session.
Second. I have a motion by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. We will retire to executive session.